All right, the time is 6:00 PM. The date is Monday, October 17th, 2022. At this time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we'll rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will open up our call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules may limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, we're opening our call to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at this time?
Mayor, did not receive any speaker cards this evening.
All right, thank you so much. I do see two hands raised on the virtual platform. We'll begin in the order that they were raised.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Sheri Har, live in Florence, Arizona. Just wanted to ask if each of you had a chance to visit the C Click Fix software and what your thoughts are, if you guys pulled reports, and again, what you're just kind of overall what your thoughts are with the new software that was spent, that was spent $40,000. I said "we" since I'm from here. I'm still concerned, and I know I voiced my concerns when you guys all voted for the C Click Fix, is that even though the software is amazing, we were worried about the same results, even though we have the new software. That's where I'm coming from, is that we're receiving the same results. There's nothing being done. I have a property that's right next door to a house my mother owns. For coming up on six years now, I have been filing on it. And once again, the yard is messed up, there's another house on Elizabeth Street that a person living in Florence is vagrant. I have to call the police for them to run him off because it's private property, but that, I think you guys had even spent money on having the yard cleaned. But again, I hope you all took the time, I know I spoke about it two weeks, that you guys pulled the reports and see how long things are just sitting idle. I know you guys are looking at voting for the RVs, you know, part of the new ordinance. Here's my concern. You guys cannot, and I don't mean you guys, council members, so please don't take that as an offense, but right now, the people that are over that department or in that department can't even handle what they currently are using. There's, it just stays stagnant. And then to add additional duties for them, maybe there needs to be more people hired in that department, I don't know. But again, I just hope that you guys took the opportunity to pull reports and review it. Thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing how this meeting pans out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you guys hear? Sorry, I'm out in the field. Okay, so I wanted to piggyback also on the C Click Fix. I really am urging the council to not continue with that program. It doesn't seem like it's been beneficial for the amount of money that's been spent on it, and it kind of seems like we're, you know, we're paying the employees to do the job, and then we're paying, you know, $30,000 annually for this program. It just doesn't make sense to us taxpayers, because that's our money that's paying for that when we have staff, it seems to be able to do this job. It just seems like a waste of, of our tax money, and it looks like only 20 users have signed up, if I'm reading all that correctly. After all this time, it's just, it doesn't seem like a good use of our taxpayers' money. I wanted to also question on the zoning stuff for the inspections. It looked like there's a spot, Section 9314, where the city can come onto people's property at any time to do inspections, I think is kind of invasion of, you know, the people's rights and property. Another subject I wanted to speak about was the Western Crossing Phase Two. I'd really like you guys to put everything on pause regarding that until the stuff that's required is done, like the widening of Centennial Park and the acceleration/deceleration lanes on 287. Us neighbors don't like that all that activity is happening there on that property when the mandatory things have not been done. Again, it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse. And I get that times are hard, and you guys are looking at compensation, you know, raises for staff. Again, you know, we're in a horrible economy, and the taxpayers are suffering also, and I don't really feel it's a wise thing to do to give so much more money to salaries when the economy and inflation is, is going crazy, and, you know, the taxpayers have to bear the grunt of that. So that's just a couple of things that was on my mind, and I'd really like you guys to take note of when making decisions on these items.
Thank you. Looks like we have one more speaker. Ms. Jo Ruiz.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I would like to speak to the situation regarding C Click Fix. I'm not too certain why we are concerning ourselves with the number of people using it, and if 20 is the quoted number, then I would like to say that it's 20 more people using the program that weren't using it before. I still believe that there's a misunderstanding, and we probably do well to educate those that just either aren't getting it or have a totally different agenda. I find it to be a remarkable program. I will say that there could be more feedback provided to the community, and the purpose of this, when I sat in the meeting when they were thinking about purchasing this program, was so that community and staff could have a better bridge to, to communication and just knowing what's happening here in the town. I mentioned at the last meeting that I really wish it were something as simple as weeds. I'm almost here and certain to tell you that if this was simply about weeds, I wouldn't be wasting anybody's time, first and foremost, my, my time, on just weeds. It goes deeper than that. I do believe that the C Click Fix program addresses much deeper than weeds, and it's moving in a good direction. I'm not going to say, let's just ax the entire program. I'm an avid user of it, and I'm proud to say that I am, and I really don't care who knows that I am. I hope the more people that understand that this is a passion about getting things cleaned up here and nothing more, I have no other agenda, then that's a good deal. If they want to think otherwise, I'm equally okay with that as well. So this being said, I would just like to say thank you for this program. I do believe that we could get better use out of it, a more maximum type usage out of it, and I don't know if it's, if it's the person that's going out currently to, to look at the different properties that are being reported for whatever reason, and again, I want to emphasize for something more than weeds. Maybe there needs to be some extra help there. I have offered several times, I am for hire, hard time, and I mean that seriously. I just think that there is a better way that we could get the C Click Fix out, so that more, more people understand it, and that those that don't, aren't out into the community giving false information.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, does anybody else have anything to add this evening during our first call to the public? Seeing no such movement in person or online, I'm going to go ahead and close the first call to the public. We have our first presentation, 6A. We have the presentation of the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award to Susan Cisco for her outstanding contributions to the town of Florence. Is there a handheld mic in that printout that Lisa usually? So for those of you that don't know me really well, I am notorious for grabbing things without people knowing. But, we always have good intent, and we always make sure that it's for the organization. All right. Council, do you want to come on down as well? Sorry, we're a little out of like, our groove this evening, it must be the weather. Susan, can you come on up this evening? She brought supporters. How are you? Good. Okay, so we have an awesome employee recognition program here in the town of Florence, and in the town of Florence, we have an employee incentive committee, and on the committee, they all receive nominations for many individuals, and they go through all the nominations without looking at the names. They're blanked out. They go through, they discuss them on merit, and then they vote as a whole. So I want to share with you what was your nomination. My coworker has shown determination, perseverance, and professionalism in her role as a permit technician. She started her role with a few notes and little training on how to handle large projects and a variety of tasks. Despite the adversity, she dove headfirst. She does not hesitate to ask questions, and she does her best to stay on top of an overwhelming amount of work. She took the initiative to help newly hired department administration to learn the ropes of SmartGov, while being patient to other employees on how to utilize the same software. Susan makes sure that those who walk into our department office receive attention immediately, provide the information that they need, and if Susan feels that an individual may need assistance from another department, she will call ahead to that other department and provide the individual with directions to the appropriate department with the name of the employee that they need to contact. Susan has gone above and beyond her duties many times, and does her very best every day to make sure that the process runs as smooth as possible. We are really proud of our employees, and we are very proud of you. Would you like to share a few words?
No. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Well, this is just a little something that we can do to continue to recognize outstanding employees in the town of Florence. I have a certificate for you. She's also going to earn a $75 gift card to the business of your choice in the town of Florence to continue supporting small businesses. So I'm not making anybody read, come on in close. I also love to have people help me read, but I'm not going to do that this evening. I'll share this proclamation. Ladies and gentlemen, it is Cities and Towns Week, October 16th to the 22nd. We want to celebrate the town of Florence. We have a proclamation. Just waiting for tech to show me that they are ready, so we can highlight our awesome, awesome cities and towns. Whereas the citizens of the town of Florence rely on the town to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital city services such as fire, police, and emergency medical response to ensure safe communities, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, and recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs, and whereas it is important to the town of Florence to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community, and whereas it is one of the great responsibilities of the town officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various means, and through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the town of Florence can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life in our communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Florence joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 16th to the 22nd of 2022 as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a round of applause for Florence, Arizona. All right, item C, we have a presentation on Florence Works For You by Mr. Jeff Graves.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I'll be sharing an update on the town service request management system, Florence Works For You, which is powered by C Click Fix software and platform. First off, I just wanted to walk you through this project's timeline to date. The software went live on July 5th for an internal open beta, which we utilized to test internal processes and workflows before our public release, which occurred later that month on July 28th. The public release included a number of announcements, including a town press release, an interview with the Florence Reminder, and multiple stories in our local papers, a social media campaign, and a C Click Fix interface and announcement that was posted to our homepage and website. Finally, the last step in this process, the rollout of our branded Florence Works For You app, is beginning tonight and will be occurring throughout the month with the goal of introducing our citizens to Florence Works For You and increasing our signups and engagement on the platform. This app has been available since, Florence Works For You, that is, since October 3rd. However, there are some minor display issues that are pending for Android users, which I'm hoping will be resolved shortly. And then on the screen here, you see a few of the graphics. On the left, we have the iOS interface showing our logo mark with our Florence Works For You name, and then on the top right here, we have our Facebook banner picture, which it's been set to that since July 28th, as well as a short welcome message, letting people know that if they see any issues around town, to go ahead and log into the C Click Fix Florence to put in that request at that website. Regarding the cost for the system, the annual cost is just under $27,000, and that covers ongoing technical support, as well as marketing support, as well as our original rollout costs. In terms of our users, we have around 13 active users, and a total of 20 users who have signed up for the platform. So those active users are users that are actively putting in tickets to the system. Then we have another seven people who have signed up, but maybe they haven't seen anything around town, and so they have not actually entered a request to the town as of yet. In terms of the requests for service that have been submitted through, October 4th, we've received just under 130 requests. Three-quarters of those have been in the code compliance category, with the next largest categories being general issues and concerns, and parks maintenance tied for second, both at 6%. And then looking at that same data by month, you'll see July, we received 55 requests for service, as well, as well as in August, we received 41. Those were our two busiest months by far, followed by September. And as I mentioned, this date, data is of, is as of October 4th, so October's a little bit behind on this slide. And now to bring kind of all this data together, here's our all results data since the system went live through last Wednesday. Real quick, I'll just touch on some of the acronyms that are used throughout this table. So we have dates, date to, days to acknowledge, excuse me, in this fourth column here. We also have days to close in this fifth column. SLA stands for Service Level Agreement. Those are the original kind of due dates, internal due dates that we place on tickets depending on their category and type. And then we have finally over here, open and overdue tickets on the far right. So you'll see in terms of our total number of requests, which we just discussed, that we've received just under 130 requests in the first column. 92% of those requests have been acknowledged as of last week. 40% of those tickets, 51 in this third column here, have been resolved and closed by staff. Our average days to acknowledge, the fourth column here, is currently sitting at 3.3 days. I would say that's an area that we definitely want to work on going forward, so we can get closer to one or two days. It's, I'd say it's a, it's our target to acknowledge these tickets the day they come in, if not the day after, except for tickets that are entered over the weekend, of course. And then in terms of our days to close, that is sitting at 13.5 days to close. That's also an area that I would like to see some improvement, though that's partly a product of some of the longer SLAs that are currently tied to the code compliance category and some other similar categories, and so that's going to naturally kind of increase our average. As of last week, our overdue items over here totaled 24, and our total number of requests that are, that are, continue to be open are at 77. So that means that 60% of the tickets, total tickets, are still open and in process since we've went live. Finally, of that 77 open ticket total, there are still 29 tickets, or 37% of that figure, that are also overdue. And so again, those are areas that we will be working on going forward. But at least with this system, we now have this data and the ability to see what areas are in need of some additional assistance and, and where to direct some of our resources going forward. And last, but certainly not least, I wanted to discuss our marketing plan for Florence Works For You, which begins tonight, for all those in the audience and at home, if you're, if you're watching. If you go to the App Store and search for Florence Works For You, both on Android and iOS, you'll see our unique branded app is now available. As I mentioned, that has been available since the beginning of the month, since October 3rd. In addition to this announcement, throughout the month, we'll be running a social media campaign to introduce our residents to Florence Works For You, and let them know that it's powered by, powered and related to C Click Fix. We'll also be running a QR code campaign, where we're planning to put those codes in community areas, such as parks and other spaces, so that community members can easily find and download the app without needing to search for it on the App Store. And then we'll also be creating a short social media promo, highlighting some of the issues that have been fixed since this system rolled out in July. And then we'll be placing a new ad in our upcoming spring activity guide for Florence Works For You. And so there's the, one example of some of the QR codes we'll be placing around, and so I think that wraps up my presentation and update for this evening. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I do have one suggestion that was provided to me, and it came from one of my neighbors who asked for help because of the Make A Difference Day that's coming up this, this coming Saturday. And my neighbor didn't know how to use a QR code. So I'm assuming that there may be others that do not know how to use a QR code, so possibly putting something out on social media, even in the links below of, you know, how to, like a tutorial. And if we're posting flyers around as well, adding that, you know, step by step of how to, just for people who may not yet know.
Absolutely, I think that's a great suggestion. We'll definitely be sure to do that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just have a question. When you, on there you have, it says overdue. What, what exactly does that? What makes it overdue?
So being overdue means it's past the number of days that we have selected, that we have stated that the issue should be solved within. So we're saying, you know, this issue should be solved within, say, five, you know, or 67 days, depending on the issue. If that issue goes beyond that timeframe, then it's considered overdue because it's past the service level agreement that we've kind of made and set out with our residents.
So those 29 could be overdue because they're sitting in court, we're waiting for the court? Or like, that's
that's because there's a process that could be delaying the fixing of that item. And so, that 29 does not mean that we're just ignoring it. 29 means that literally 29 of them could be going through the court process.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just want to add that it is important, when I'm looking at all of the notations from the public's perception, that doesn't seem that there is a lot of updates. And I know that was mentioned before, but I think it would really help resolve the public's image of what's going on or understanding of what's going on, if that makes sense, by having it updated on the particular violation. Because right now, it just says, it's acknowledged, it has been seen, and that's it. It sort of leaves it very vague, and it was set that way for months. So I think it's important just to touch base of maybe even closing that, but then having it in a pending internal log. And so that way, it doesn't show overdue, because that doesn't look very good, even though we know that there might be a process going on in the background. I think it's important that we keep it updated in the public and that we can handle that if it is going through a legal process outside of it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think that's excellent feedback. In addition to being a request that can gather these, or rather, a system that can gather these requests, it's also supposed to be a public communication platform, where there's a nice back-and-forth between the cities and towns and our residents. So that's definitely an area that we want to improve on going forward.
I would say one thing, though, because it's a forward-facing program where the public has access to it, I would say until the issue is resolved, that we would want to keep it on as open, so they know we're still actively working on it, and maybe update that SLA date with the next step and make sure it says, now that it's moved into court, it will require another XYZ dates before this will be resolved, so that we're tracking the process. In no way do I want the citizens to think that we've closed something that has not been accomplished.
Right. We'd always want that communication. I completely agree. And then, also, I had asked Lisa about this, and I didn't know if it was possible, but I do, I love CClickFix in a lot of ways, but I do not like the images, I guess, as far as from the outside. I don't like the fact that people can Google somebody's address on there and pull it up and see their property, maybe see their dog out front, things of that nature. I didn't know if it was technically possible to remove the image portion of it. I know, back in South Dakota where I came from, I honestly don't remember what program it was at the time, but you could tag it, and it would show up as a dot on the map, and you could put an address, and you could add photos, but from the outside, it would just look like a dot on a map. And you could read the violation, you could see what was notated, but that way, then you could add as many dots as you want. If it streetlights it out, you could have as many dots as you wanted, and you could see the streetlight was out, and that was fine. But I think there was a fair amount of public understanding, oh, they're talking about that streetlight at that corner. But I just felt like that was a little bit more, I don't know, a little bit classier to have versus having the images out there. Especially since they don't seem to go away. So, that was just my two cents.
Appreciate that. I'll be sure to get with IT on that and see if there's anything we can be done on that front.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation this evening. Item number seven is consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is Resolution Number 1837-22. This is approval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, establishing regular meeting locations, dates and times for the Town of Florence Town Council and Town Boards and Commissions. And Item B is to receive and file the following Board and Commission Meeting Minutes. First, the Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes of August 31st, 2022. Second, Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of July 21st, 2022. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda this evening. Is there any member of the public or council that would like an item removed at this time? Seeing no such movement, we do need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the consent.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Moving into Item 8, which is our unfinished business. 8A is discussion and possible action on amending the code enforcement sections of the Florence Code of Ordinances. One, this is the second reading of Ordinance Number 17... I'm so sorry, 717-22. Discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting revised Chapter 93 of the Town Code to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the Town of Florence by protecting neighborhoods against blight and providing standards for property maintenance of the exterior buildings and land, establishing procedures and penalty for enforcement of conditions determined to be public nuisances and maintaining certain property maintenance standards as provided herein. Repealing Chapter 93 of the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances in its entirety and all other ordinances or parts of laws in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date of January 1st, 2023. The first reading was on October 3rd, 2022, and at this time, I'd like to call forward our staff member, Mr. Harvey Kraus.
Mayor, council, as you indicated, this is the second reading of two ordinances for changes and amendments to the town's code enforcement program. I think one of the things that the amendment to Chapter 93 will do is shorten the timeframe for pursuing abatement on properties that are in code violation by allowing the staff to, once they find a violation, to send a notice, not necessarily deliver the notice, but just mail the notice or deliver the notice. Then that begins the 30-day process. And also, we will, the staff is committed to shortening the timeframe, and I believe some of these amendments will allow us to do that. I think that's one of the primary advantages of this. It also has a lot more specificity in terms of definitions and allows us to pursue public nuisances a little more efficiently. A couple of the follow-up issues that were brought up at the last, the first reading, one was the parking of commercial vehicles. That was in Chapter 73 of the Town Code. The one question was 26,000 pounds. What, and the chief provided me a graphic, and let me see, where would that be? Do you know where the... Is that... Trent's not here. Where would we get that? Do you know where that is? That's it? Yes. That's it. There you go. Thank you. So what the code provides for, anything greater than 26,000 pounds, and so, 2,000 pounds is a ton, so any half-ton, one-ton pickup, regular commercial vehicles would be exempt from that. So we're looking at transit buses, large furniture trucks, refuge trucks, tow trucks. So this gives you some feel for what types of vehicles would not be allowed to park on the street for a length of time. It does, the code does provide for exceptions for emergency situations, breakdowns, repair work. So, that is one of the questions that was brought up at the last first reading. Otherwise, the civil penalties are provided for that allow for a tiered approach for first, second, and third offenses. So it's progressive. It's less than most of the comparative communities we looked at. It also provides for an incentive for folks that do comply with the code in a timely manner, that they can get that greatly reduced to $100 for a residential violation for the first time. So it does provide for that. So overall, we think we have a much better and stronger case, a much stronger case for code enforcement program, and staff is looking forward to implementing it, reducing those numbers of cases that are pending. So, without further ado, I'm available for any questions or...
Thank you very much. Council? Do you have any questions or comments? I know we've gone through this before. This is our second reading of this ordinance this evening. Is there any further discussion, question, or comments? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 9C.
No?
What?
717.
8A1.
8A, I'm, excuse me. 8A1.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 8-2, this is the second reading of Ordinance Number 718-22. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting amendments to Chapter 73 of the Town Code by clarifying the prohibition of parking of commercial motor vehicles and recreational vehicles on the main street between Butte Avenue and Ruggles Street, eliminating the provision authorizing the chief of police to issue permits for operation of commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles, adding a new section, 7314, restricting the parking and standing of commercial motor vehicles and recreational vehicles on public roads and rights of way, and providing exceptions under certain circumstances, and repealing all other ordinances or parts of law in conflict therewith, providing severability and providing for an effective date of January 1st, 2023. The first reading was held October 3rd, 2022. Again, I'll call forward Mr. Harvey Kraus.
Mayor, council, this amendment does primarily two things. One, it clarifies that commercial vehicles are not permitted, the ones that I described earlier, on Main Street between Ruggles and Butte. Number one. And number two, it eliminates the permitting for the chief of police to give a special permit for someone to park a commercial vehicle on a public street. So those are the two primary things it does. Otherwise, I'm available to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Item 8A2. Ordinance Number 718-22.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on to Item 9, new business. 9A is Resolution Number 1845-22. Discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving a final plat for Western Crossings, Phase Number 2. At this time, I'll call forward Ms. Maricela Benitez.
It's in the folder. Final plat. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Today, we brought the second phase final plat for Western Crossings, Phase 2. There's two phases to Western Crossings. And the first phase was originally platted in 2006. It was amended in September for some small things, but the second phase has not yet been platted. Phase 2 is a total of 35.57 gross acres, and it will consist of 142 single-family lots. And that is add of 272 lots. That will be the total of Western Crossings. The minimum lot width is 47 feet, and the minimum lot depth is 100 feet. Access to this phase will be provided through Phase 1, since most of this second phase consists of the park and also the wash for drainage. The zoning has been set as PUD, R1, or Single Family Residential, so there is a PUD that overarcs over the entirety of Western Crossings. The density for this space specifically is 3.99. So as a total, there'll be 130 in the first phase, 142 in the second phase for 272 lots. This combined density comes to 4.18 units per acre, and the max density listed in the PUD is 4.25. So we're under that max density. Looking, this is the final plat itself. You have the, you can see your three spots where they will connect to Phase 1, and where you will have your exit points, as well as the larger park in the left. Something that was stipulated by the Planning and Zoning Commission was to have a trail, not only that goes through it, but also connects to some of the lots to the north. Now, the lots to the north are mostly owned by private owners. However, we believe a trail going that way for maybe future development could be beneficial for connectivity and walkability within the Town of Florence. So, because some of it is a bit steep, we plan to have a trail that connects going northward along Centennial Park Road. Now, it does have 8.3656 acres of open space, well over the required 15%. Most of that open space is in the northwest corner. You have walking paths that go through that and also come through the wash to provide full north-south accessibility for people within that development. The plat works to maintain the wash for drainage, and the proposed landscape meets all the landscape requirements in terms of low-water usage and overall placement. There is turf only in playable areas, which is something the Planning and Zoning Commission highly encourage. And open space parks will be maintained by the HOA. As I said, there was three points of access. Centennial Park will be the main point of access, and it is to be widened to accommodate the increased residences. The traffic impact analysis recommends this, as well as ADOT recommends, and not only recommends, but it's more of a shall instead of should. They're saying it needs to happen, this widening of Centennial Park Road. There will also be deceleration lanes from State Route 287. Most of that open space is in the northwest corner. You have walking paths that go through that and also come through the wash to provide full north-south accessibility for people within that development. The plat works to maintain the wash for drainage and the proposed landscape meets all the landscape requirements in terms of low water usage and overall placement. There is turf only in playable areas, which is something the Planning and Zoning Commission highly encouraged. And open space parks will be maintained by the HOA. As said, there was three points of access. Centennial Park will be the main point of access and it is to be widened to accommodate the increased residences. The traffic impact analysis recommends this as well as ADOT recommends and not only recommends, but it's more of a shall instead of should. They're saying it needs to happen, this widening of Centennial Park Road. There will also be deceleration lanes from State Route 287. So as stated, ADOT is requiring intersection improvements as well as deceleration lanes in the widening of Centennial Park Road. Now, design meets the overall requirements of the PUD. Staff has discussed offsite improvements with ADOT to come terms with what is and what's needed. And the widening of Centennial Park will be completed by the developer, Forestar, and the offsite intersection improvements will be completed as well. Staff recommends approval of the final plat. We also got an approval of the preliminary platform, Planning and Zoning Commission, with their suggestions. With that, counsel can now vote to approve the final plat and it will be recorded by Pinal County, or they can vote no and reject the final plat for Western Crossings, Phase Two, for any reason whatsoever, but the reason shall be recorded in the minutes pursuant to Section 150.233. The applicant would be required to return the final plat process with the new revisions. This development of the subdivision allows for not only continued community growth and rooftop development and population growth, but it also provides a place for people who are newly employed or in this area, a place to live. We also have the Forestar represented here if there are any questions.
Would the representative like to have an opportunity to speak at all? That's okay. We appreciate you being here this evening, so thank you for that. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this project? Councilmember Anderson.
What is the timeframe on this?
I will ask our representative to answer that one. Didn't think you'd get to sit quietly, huh?
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This Phase Two of the project will start concurrently after Phase One, which is roughly July of 2023.
And when will it be completed?
My goal would be by end of March of 2024.
About a year, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
With that completion date, just for clarification, will that include the widening and the deceleration lanes that were mentioned?
The plan would be that. We do have ADOT approval on the traffic impact analysis and that has now been kicked off to design with an engineer specializing with ADOT. I've chosen CVL. They have started as of last week and we should have first submittal in about a week to ADOT. And based on the TIA, it's pretty much you do exactly what they say, and so we don't anticipate too much pushback.
Perfect. So that's in the works and, perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We have it in the works and with an ADOT recordation or project tracking number as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. I like that you're using low water use landscaping, so thank you for being environmentally friendly. All right, with that, we do need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 1845-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item Number B is Resolution Number 1846-22. This is approval, disapprove, wait, back it up, Ms... Item B is Resolution Number 1846-22. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the recommended modifications to the town of Florence Position Classification Plan, Compensation Plan, and Pay ranges for employees based upon the findings in the fiscal year 2223 Salary Study dated October 3rd, 2022, and fiscal year 2022/2023 Compensation Plan and as directed during the regular town council meeting on October 17th, 2022, with implementation effective and declaring an emergency. Please note that counsel will select a date and a year. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Garcia for further presentation with Ms. Jimenez and Ms. Wilson.
Mayor and Counsel, we'll just let them get it up and make sure we're sharing with Zoom Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, we're here tonight to talk about the pay range plan for the town of Florence. Before we begin, we want to just talk about a few definitions that we're going to be talking about repeatedly through this presentation. Ownership and range. Ownership and range means that if you are 10% on a scale and you are in a range 10 and you're moving up to a range 20, you would remain 10% on the scale. This will eliminate anybody from starting out brand-new and coming in up right behind you, so we're not having anyone fall back. We're asking for everybody to maintain ownership within their range. Partial placement. This is going to be a financial discussion that we will have with your finance director. And what it is, is it's a different way of computing how much it will cost the town by taking the difference between the range that they're on now with their future range and adding that base pay to the salary. Pay range, that is where they fall on the scale. And the scale is all of the ranges made up to where we place our employees. So that's what we're talking about tonight. So in March of 2022, the town council approved this list of comparators. This was done after your department heads and your HR director went out and they provided a list of communities that had comparable services. And so this is the list. You'll see some are smaller, some are larger, some are within a 30-minute driving time, and you'll really note that we are losing our employees to the people that were in a 30-minute driving time. Benchmarking. So our philosophies when we were going through and doing benchmarking was to remain competitive and to attract and retain qualified staff. We're asking to equalize the salary range. Right now, our current salary range has bands and it's an inverted band program. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. And we're asking for a 50% scale that allows for all employees to have equal equality within the scale. Reduction and elimination of compression, this is through ownership and range, and establish a schedule for reevaluation of the budget cycle. So this salary scale is done on the July 1st numbers of this fiscal year. So that was a moment in time. Since that time, other communities are now out looking at their scale. They're beginning to adopt new scales or they're beginning to adopt increases or increasing their marketability for key positions. And so as each one adopts into a new scale, our scale goes into being old. And so we're asking every two years for the council to consider the competitiveness of our scale in the budget cycle. So this is what our inverted scale looks like. The very bottom of the scale only has 35%. What does that mean? It means when you start working for the town of Florence, your scale's only going to grow from that beginning point to 35%. So is there equality in our scale right now? No. Every employee doesn't have the same growth. As you move up the scale, your percentage increases. So you go to 45 to 55, your department heads are all on a 60% scale. We're asking to narrow that back down to a 50% scale and have that scale be across the board for all employees. This promotes longevity. If you say, "I value an employee and their length of service that they have with the town of Florence," then we value them no matter what position they are, and we want to have the same opportunities to provide for longevity within the scale. Did I do that?
I think so.
You think so? And when you look at our scale, threw me off for a minute, I apologize. When you look at our scale, in between each range, there's 2.5% in between. So from the bottom of our scale to the top of our scale, there is a 2.5% between each and every range. So in your packet tonight, you were provided with three options. Your original packet that you were issued only had two options. So that's why we have option A, B, and C. The option A is keeping the inverted scale and it just brings everybody up to midpoint market, or I should say market that was based on midpoint. Option B is the new compensation scale, just like option A, using the same mid-scale points and the same placement, but it removes that pyramid structure and replaces it with a 50% earning capacity for all grades within our salary range. And council gets to make a decision to provide ownership and range or partial placement on each item, but we are asking for ownership and range. And C, this is the recommended option. It is B, but it advances the police officers and sergeants on the scale. The reason for this is we are having an extremely difficult time being able to recruit certified lateral police officers. And we'll talk about the stats more as we go. And without these changes, we will continue to lose officers and we definitely don't want that to happen to our community. So how was the benchmarking done? Our HR director, Catherine Wilson, she did a great job by contacting all the communities and getting each one of their scales. And then this is a, shows the Parks and Rec worker, but we have a chart showing all of the positions that were benchmarked. And you'll see Florence pays currently $35,000, that's our midpoint, 35,436. The average for all communities was 41,589. This is showing that the town of Florence is actually scaled at the midpoint is actually 17.36% behind scale. So when we place that position, we place it at the nearest point available, and you'll see that the position would then be placed and now it is comparable to other communities. We're not leading, but we're not lagging. We are at a point to where we're not aggressively attracting, but we are attracting. So the recommendation that staff is requesting is restructuring the scale to make all the ranges uniform by removing the bands and it remains the same for the placement on the scale as all. And we already went over the police officers and the sergeant positions. In the past 24 months, we have lost 18 certified police officers. We currently today have seven positions that are still out there and are still available, and we still have not been able to attract police officers. If council approves this tonight, we will remarket our police officer position and we'll get that advertisement out to the street right away. This, by redoing the scale, we are not addressing the other issue that's at play with police officers. They are also receiving for municipalities hiring bonuses. If you, assigning bonus for signing a contract for remaining with the community, and some of them are doing five years where you get a little bonus on the time you sign your contract or sign on for employment, and then they're giving it to you in two years, and then they're paying you again at five years. We're constantly looking at it, but these are some of the things that we're seeing and when we're losing officers and they're telling us what they're receiving. This, last week, I had a police officer that received an offer that was $10 an hour more than what our scale is. When that police officer came to me, I looked at the scale and I said, "Can you give me a chance to talk to the council first before we have this conversation?" Because our current scale did not even have a large enough width for me to even ask for a, to even provide a counter offer because it was without our scale. The managers that you hire are only allowed to place people within the scale that is approved by council. And so there was not the bandwidth to be able to place that officer. The other thing I will tell you is that the finance director and I were having lunch at O'Pavilla this week. It was really great, just so you know. And while we were at the checkout line, we saw a flyer for correctional officers. Correctional officers at the prison are now starting at $49,000 a year. Our police officers on our current scale make, oh gosh, I think...
It was...
Forty-two? Forty-two thousand dollars a year on your current scale. On the scale that I am asking you to adopt, they are moving to make...
Entry 58,000.
Fifty-eight thousand. So you can go be a DOC officer, which is a great job, and it's great for our community that they have increased the officer's wage. I want to say that because they are part of our community and we respect the work that they do. But our police officer positions, we're asking to increase them to be $10,000, basically more than that of that starting wage. They are also a viable candidate to be a future police officer. We want to make sure we're attracting everyone that we need to. And now I'm going to turn this over for our finance director to give, do you want me to do it? To give you the financial analysis.
Our existing scale, the history and purpose. The town of Florence has adopted a compensation schedule that's based on an inverted pyramid, and it was implemented in the early 2010s and has not changed since that time. Each band has a factor of earning capacity built into the band, and the purpose of the scale was to accelerate the earning capacity of the lower-wage earners and abate the earning capacity of the upper-wage earners. The intent of the approach was to encourage those at lower earning levels to advance and enhance their, through promotion, but in reality, Florence has limited promotional opportunities. On the other hand, by abating the progression of upper-wage earners, the intent was to help control compensation costs, and the capacity to earn was considered an incentive, though the only amount that these top-level wage earners would be given as a merit was between 1 and 3%. So you can see they were advancing very slowly besides starting at a lower entry point with a 60% earning capacity. Cost of living increases were not applied to the scale. Wage increases deferred throughout the years to reduce costs. Placement was not given. When a scale upgrade was done, you were just basically said, "Okay, you can earn more money," but you weren't given any type of increase to promote that larger earning capacity. In the current fiscal year, this has resulted in staff loss at a greater rate than seen in past years because of competition. Existing employees out of balance with, are out of balance with newly hired staff because we're having to hire them in, at a larger amount of money, and this is what's called compression. Reclassifications have occurred only for hard-to-recruit positions. The survey results in the development scale, we did this chart to show you each of the municipalities we surveyed, what their percentage of earning capacity is, and most of the most common approach appears to be the 50% spread. This is adopting current earning capacity, option A. If this scale is adopted using the current pyramid methodology, we're estimating the following costs, including benefits. If, for the full year, if you keep it at ownership and range, it's 1.7 million dollars for the full year, 1.2, almost 1.3 for nine months, 847,000 for six months, and 423,000 for three months. If you use the difference between the old scale and the new scale in the range, which is, we're calling that partial placement, the full year is about 1.5 million, for nine months, 1.1 million, for six months, 7.39, 739,000, for three months, 370,000. Now, this does not move you equally as if you were to do it on the ownership and range. It would actually place you lower on the entry point. So you can see that there's a difference in the way that you handle this. If you do it at full, giving them ownership and range, their whole as they go across, if you use the other one, it's decreasing their position on that scale a little bit. And the difference between the two, ownership and range and partial placement for... and partial placement for the full year is 214,000 dollars. So it's not much of a difference. And option B, uh, we were, this is going to the 50% earning capacity for all steps. Using the same um methodology for a full year, it's about 1.9 million dollars and then consecutively going down. Using the difference between the old range and the new range, it's about 1.6 million. And the difference is about 250, or 260,000 between ownership and range and partial pla- uh placement for the full year. Option, oop, option C. This is utilizing uh 50% earning capacity, but with the uh police officers advancing a little bit higher. Uh, our full year would be 2.1 million. And using the old range versus new range would be about 1.9 million. And the difference is 270,000 or 271,000 between ownership and range and partial placement for the new year. Uh, this is a, a little chart showing the comparative between option A, B, and C at a 50% model with ownership in range. And telling you at 12-month implementation and then at nine months, six months, and three months. Estimated implementation cost for option C for fiscal year 2223. If implementation occurs now, approximately at nine months, which we're a bit past that now, the estimate of costs are as follows. In the general fund, 1.4 million dollars. In highway user funds, about 102,000 dollars. In the enterprise fund, at 69,000 dollars. For a total of all funds at 1.6 million dollars. For uh next year, 2324, for full implementation, the general fund will be at about 1.9 million. Highway user, 136,000. Enterprise funds at about 92,000 for a total of 2,156,000 dollars. Uh, funding for the scale adjustment. In the general, I'm going to focus in on general fund because about 91% of all the expenses in the general fund for this. Uh, the previous year fiscal year revenues exceeded expenditures by about 2.1 million dollars. And the current fiscal year, we're estimating the expenditures to be about 2.7 million dollars. In the future fiscal year, the revenue uh is estimated to remain the same as this fiscal year. And uh revenue fluctuations could influence the estimates of revenues. And this is, uh, we're, we're kind of looking at this because on January 1 of this next year, the flat tax for the income tax rate at 2.5% will take effect. This is going to change the mix of how much money is collected in state shared income tax. But on the other hand, the increase of the allocation is going to go from 15% to 18% for cities and towns. So we'll have a, an increase there. That may or may not influence uh how much money we're going to receive. Of course, uh, in state shared revenues, you're looking at two years backwards. But in future years, this may impact. But with our economy that, in the state of Arizona, growing so quickly, it may or may not uh have any effect at all on us. In fact, it may increase. Expenditures are contingent upon personnel and operational requests from department directors or change in services that the town provides. So all of this is taken into account at budget time. We have to look to see if there's any new positions that are going to be considered, if operational changes are going to be needed. Uh, uh, we're closely watching the um effect of gasoline prices on the departments and how much it's going to cost us. There's just a variety of factors. If council wishes to increase services, that's another um thing that's going to happen. So revenues are anticipated to support the increase in salaries and benefit. Highway user and enterprise funds will support the expenditure at this time. Adopting a new scale in fiscal year 2223 will result in reallocation of available, undesignated budget capacity. So this means moving budget allocation only, not budget money. We, that's what we did last year when we paid off the PSPRS liability. We just moved capacity from one fund into another to be able to pay that off. We had plenty of um fund balance or revenues to pay that off with, and so that's what we did. So right now, the fund that has that reserve fund is in the general government capital projects fund. We always provide a budget in there for un- anticipated emergencies. And we hold it there to make sure that we have funding to cover that. And we have quite a bit uh of, in a line item that would be able to be moved over to cover this if you decided to implement early this year. And it will not impact our expenditure limitation because it is a, a non-excludable expenditure, but it has already been budgeted. Permanent base adjustment. With our recent election approving permanent base adjustments, which will take effect next fiscal year, beginning on July 1, 2023, we will have ample budget to cover this. Uh, any budgeted expenditures that's necessary to go forward. Other factors uh in January, on January 1, 2023, the Arizona minimum wage will be increasing. And this will affect our part-time staff that is seasonal and temporary. It'll increase from $12.80 to $13.85, thus increasing expenditure. But the departments that use these types of employee prepare an estimate for us each year, and it is included in the budgets under part-time salaries. It's contingent upon programming plan for the next year, in the next budget year. And that will have to probably be increased to accommodate some of that also. And closing thoughts. It will take a large commitment of management and town council to cease the practice of balancing the budget by delaying or withholding employee wage increases. This should be the very last option when budget shortfalls are anticipated. A fiscal policy update should be developed to curtail this practice in future years. Additionally, this policy should include updating the compensation scale with annual cost of living adjustments if they can be afforded in that fiscal year. We have to provide a policy for that. At this time, it is important to update our existing scale to bring it in line with market and our top employment competitors.
Mayor.
Mayor and vice mayor, council members, that is the conclusion of our presentation. I'm going to leave up the recommendations for option C, showing the pay period of November 5 as the first available pay period to be able to implement. If council would like to choose a later date, we can find the proper pay period. We have a list of dates available that we can definitely read into the record for you. And if anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer. I want to once again state that, and I want to thank for the department heads, the HR director who took the time to do this, the department heads who came out and um worked on this. Every single department head was provided a copy of, of the study. And with our comparators with the list, they went back in and double-checked all of the placements to make sure that they were spot on. And so the work is really a team effort and an approach. And I can, we also had each one of our um department heads state in an email if they agreed or did not agree. And this is a complete recommendation coming from our entire management team to the, to the floor of the council.
Excellent. Council, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Council member Anderson.
Uh, question about the bonuses. What would be a recommended bonus, hiring bonus? Should we do like uh part of it now and part of it in five years or?
I, I would definitely recommend that if council would like to do a hiring bonus, that we pay half upfront and half at five years. Other communities have gone so far as they have, it, it divided in three different types of um, so they get it at maybe time of signing. Maybe they get it at three years and maybe they get it at five years. But definitely we want to do something that would be able to compete with the marketplace as well as make sure that we are retaining them.
I guess I would suggest that we pay 5,000 bonus now in five, in five years.
Is that something that we would discuss now or is that something that would come back to us? How does that work?
We can absolutely add that to our motion. And I would assume that that is a police officer signing bonus. Yes, we can definitely add that to our motion.
And then as we continue to look and create policies, looking at adding the type of verbiage in, especially when we have departments that have shortfalls or that we're anticipating vacancies. Because I do know that we've experienced, you know, even in the past with our water, wastewater, we struggled to find water treatment operators. And, you know, I know that in other departments, as we're forecasting for the future, you know, being able to plan for that. One highlight that I do want to put on record for our town is we do offer excellent benefits to our employees in regards to health, life, dental, vision. So that's something that, you know, over time, I want to make sure we continue to keep that high caliber and also remain competitive with other employers around us or that we're losing employees to. Because that is a reason why people do change employers is to provide those type of benefits as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Council member Rodriguez, did you have something as well?
I just wanted to add, I think that there was some discussion earlier about um the current economic times and giving wage increases for our employees. And I think it's important for us all to remember that this is, we have to take a holistic approach when we look at government. It's all sort of like running a family or even your human body, that everything's interconnected. So if we're looking at economic development and we want our median household income to improve, we need to be the one who leads the way with that. Um, when we talk about taking care of our town and wanting it to be beautiful, we need to be the ones who start that, who initiate that. So I know from the outside, it can often seem that, that we're spending a lot of money and that it's just going to people's pockets. But we're hoping that, obviously, that increases both the services as well as by being able to retain top employees and attract um top employees, but also being able to have that money come back into the community. Um, maybe help building a fence for code compliance, taking care of weeds, going to a restaurant, everything that comes into our community. So it's all interconnected. It's not just one piece. Um, so I guess that's one little comment that I just wanted to make is that this is very important, not just for our staff, but for the community as a whole.
Just to piggyback off, that's also what we communicated with Prop 459. When we communicated to our citizens, we are looking at the betterment of our community. And that entails also taking care of our employees so they in turn serve our community and citizens. Any other questions or comments, vice mayor?
Uh, so on the bonuses, do we have to set a specific amount? Because what I'm thinking, my concern is, is that we say, okay, $10,000, well, that could easily no longer be competitive just as quick as we set it and put it in writing. Tomorrow, it could be different. So I would prefer it to be more that we stay within a competitive range of bonuses and put a cap on it so that, you know, somebody can't go out and just offer some crazy bonus to someone. But that we can, if we're going to offer a bonus, we do a scan of what everybody else is doing. Or if we know that we are competing with someone, we can be more competitive with them if it's a position that we feel we desperately need to fill. And um then, then we, we come to the table with more to talk about. If, if we cap ourselves at $10,000, we might not still be able to stay in the game for very long because we know our neighbors are moving much faster than us. And so, you know, I would hate for that to happen. And I understand our need for police officers. I, I completely understand that. And I 100% am behind implementing that they get to offer bonuses. I would say signing three-year and then five-year. Split it up into three because you're kind of giving them that incentive halfway through. Like, hey, look, we see that you're doing a great job. We want to still um keep you and, because some people, I've walked away from a bonus halfway through too and paid it back. You pay back what they've given you, so you don't have to pay it all back. You just pay back what they've given you because I, I wasn't satisfied at that position. It wasn't what they sold it to be. So I think if, you know, at the three halfway mark there too. And then I guess my other question, kind of concern is, maybe I'm just not uh well-versed in this enough because I don't deal with fire enough in my personal life. But is fire just one of those fields where you stay longer? You, you tend not to want to leave. You kind of find your home and you stay there. Is that why our, we're able to retain firefighters without having to be as competitive as we are having to be with our police officers? I just want to understand because I don't want to say that we're going to offer, office, offer a police officer a bonus, but we're not going to offer, offer a firefighter a bonus to come and join us because to me, they are both equally important to um the safety of this town. So I don't want to not offer something to somebody when they deserve it.
I will say that we are blessed to have the members of the fire team working for us. Uh, most of them have a 15-year. They've been with us for 15 years. And they have been, most of them have been our firefighters who came when we went to have a full-time department. And they have stayed with us. I think it's not only the culture within the fire department that leads to them being like a family. They live together, they work together. A lot of times, you know, they even hang out together when they're not at work. But it is a very much a, I am told, a great place to be part of the Florence Fire Department. And so we have a retention to where they are staying with us. And we're appreciative of that and we do appreciate them. Um, in the last two years, I know of one, two, two firefighters. I don't remember what level of positions they are, but that have left. Um, Chief, would you like to speak to that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cortez, I appreciate the opportunity and all the kind words. Thank you. Um, you know, I, I think during these times, we're, we're seeing some unprecedented employment trends, if you will. And though, yes, you're, you're correct, we do uh have a majority of our people that have stayed here um through the time. But all of those enticing offers are, are also available to, other fire departments are doing the same thing because challenges throughout the nation are creating that trend of not as many people coming into public safety in general. Um, so we are in a state where we could be competing at the same level just from different areas instead of bringing, you know, instead of um recruiting people to come in, is that we have experienced seasoned people um that may be able to take advantage of, of those same opportunities in other municipalities to, to receive those signing bonuses. So it's, it's kind of a little different situation than the police department, but we're all, um, you know, we're, we're all kind of in that area of recruitment and retention just at different levels of the scale.
And mayor, vice mayor, members of council, I will say that I think every municipality that's going through this recruitment issues, that we're all hoping that the market stabilizes and that people stop one-upping each other's offer because it gets more expensive for every community. So we're hoping that hiring the, hiring bonuses is something because everyone is in desperate need for police officers right now. That's why we're seeing it. And we're hoping that the market normalizes and that once all of the police officers are in place, that we don't see this switching of jobs and playing to where who's ever going to give me more, to give me more, I'm going to jump. So we're hoping that we get some long-term certified lateral police officers based on this, and that's normalization of the market is the best thing that could happen for every municipality.
So I guess for me then, in, in that, I mean, I think it's great, and it speaks to our fire department, that most of our firefighters have been here for 15 years. But I, I agree with, with Chief over here, that we are in a, we're in a market that it's not just going to be our police officers, next thing you know, it will be our firefighters that are being poached. So I want to make sure that if, right now, we're saying we're going to offer bonuses to police officers, that if we start to see the trend, that, hey, the first one that gets offered a better job and a bonus is in, is part of that, that we act that quick to be competitive, and then it is no longer just for our police department, that it moves over and we say, if, if our employees are being offered bonuses somewhere to entice them away from us, that we will react quickly, because I don't want to lose one firefighter, I don't want to lose one police officer, I don't want to lose a public works guy just over a bonus.
We will watch that, and we will, we will follow it, and we'll make sure that we are communicating with council.
I would open that up more than just fire and police. We've also had that problem with some of our other departments, so I would suggest that we do this across the board.
We will track all departments. We're not being directed to give bonuses at this time, we're being directed to track it and determine which positions should be offered a bonus, that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Exactly.
And we're going to do it town-wide.
And I have two other members that want to, thanks. I do have two other members, Councilmember Anderson, were you finished? I didn't want to-
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt, then everybody just jumped. All right, so Councilmember Rodriguez, and then Councilmember Hughes.
I wanted to clarify two things real quick, because at first I thought we were talking about just bonuses for hiring, and now, and I was thinking also for retention, but then I'm hearing that we're also talking about retention, so if somebody is being offered a bonus as part of a, a package to transfer, then that, that would be on the table to possibly keep them retained, so a retention bonus.
That is part of a counteroffer-
Yes.
-that would be up to your city manager to be able to, you're currently in the process of hiring a city manager, when you have your manager in place, the manager would very much be able to do a counteroffer, as long as it shows on their scale. Because council has approved a maximum amount that that employee is allowed to earn during that fiscal year without overtime, and so as long as it's on that, then that works.
So that's, I just wanted to take that takeaway. And for me personally, I think that we should implement this in our first pay period that's available, which is the November 5th one. And I personally don't think that we need to track a whole lot about the retention, because if we have a, any, any employee who's going to be leaving, especially in those fields, I think that we should leave it to management to make that discretion, and within a range, if we wanted to set a range, I did agree with that with Michelle, I thought that was a great comment. But I don't, I think if we're waiting and we're watching, like you said, I already know, I've watched other council meetings, and they are already moving to a higher pay grade with bonuses. We are already going to be starting at a very low C. We can't be doing that, we need to be executing at B and A ranges, we can't keep falling behind. So to me, I don't want to keep doing this analysis phase to continue to fall behind.
We agree with you 100%.
I also believe that giving, giving you that range, that we don't have to keep coming back and saying, this is not working, we're not doing enough, that we put that back into your hands to stop the bleeding, because we do have bleeding.
We have a bleed.
Thanks. Are there any other council members that have questions, comments? Councilmember Neil?
I just wanted to say that it's great, the scales, it's wonderful, but I want to say it's also kind of embarrassing that it's just barely happening now, to where we have a police department that's kept us safest in the state for I don't know how long, and we're barely starting to get these people paid. It should have been done, this is, we're way behind the eight ball. So the sooner, the way better in my book, yeah, honestly, it's just embarrassing that we're barely getting to it now.
Councilmember, I agree with you.
I, one part I left out was that, I guess I would be in support of recommending Option C with the November 5th start date as well, and the addition of making sure that we're clear of the bonuses, that there's that range, and that it is a bonus that is not just restricted to one department.
Understood.
Second?
Did you make a motion?
No, I didn't make a motion.
I thought you did.
No, I was-
An adoption of a resolution when you do.
I'm making an adoption for a resolution. I make an adoption for a resolution that we go with Option C with the addition of the bonus pay range to cover departments that are in need of critical position fulfillment, and to also keep us competitive for employees that we may be losing. Effective pay period will be November 5th.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 9C, Resolution Number 1848-22, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, Adopting the Recommended Modifications to the Town of Florence Mayor and Town Council Compensation Plan Based Upon the Findings in the Fiscal Year 22-23 Salary Study for Elected Officials Dated October 19, 2022, and as Directed During the Regular Town Council Meeting on October 17, 2022, with Implementation Effective January 1, 2023, and Declaring an Emergency, Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor and members of council, as part of our study, we did go back out using the League of Arizona Cities data, and we did do a comparison for the council members and the mayor. What we did find was that not only was the council and the mayor underpaid currently, the mayor receives $950, the council receives $650. The average from all of our comparators is, the mayor's salary would be $1,275 a month, and council members would be $750 a month. The other thing we noted is when we looked into benefits, that almost 80% of our comparators provide council with medical benefits. We also looked into the elected officials' retirement, and in order to do that, you will be voting for this resolution, which gives authorization for staff to go through and do all necessary steps to be able to put that in place by the budget year. That requires an actuarial be done pursuant to state law, and then they'll tell us the rates and how much it will cost and what potential will be. So we will actually finish out this adoption with the budget process, but this will be directing staff to do everything necessary and authorizing the proceeding of moving forward. This must be adopted prior to our new council members being sworn in. And the effective date will be January, because our new council members get sworn in, in December 5th. Council's paid on a monthly basis, so it will go to the first availability, which will be the first, the January 1st, 2023. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor.
I guess I don't understand, I, I can see in Phoenix why your mayor would have a higher pay scale than your council member, but for us in the Town of Florence, all council members, all seven of us, regardless of our title, do the same job, and we all serve on boards and committees and require the same amount of time. So I guess I'm just trying to understand the difference in those, because, like I said, we're all seven members doing the same job here.
We did a title-to-title comparison, it's, it's within the salaries, it's within your background information, it's the blue, and it shows the list of each position. And then what we did was, we just did a title-to-title, mayor was a title, council member was a title, and that's how it came up. Council can choose to do a different type of methodology if that's what they choose, but this is how other communities that we're comparing ourselves pay and what they, what the role is that they pay for.
There are differences in roles and responsibilities, per se, and in time that is expended, and if you want, Ms. Garcia can go through that pursuant to what is written in our code.
On the, on the top of my head, I would like to say that the mayor does run the meetings, she's your presiding officer, she's also your ceremonial officer that can issue proclamations. Historically, in the Town of Florence, the mayor serves on the Resolutions Committee for the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, and is also our MAG and CAG liaisons. And I apologize, I do not have a complete memory of every section of the town code, but that, that is what I can provide off the top of my head, I apologize.
That's okay, you did a great job. Councilmember Hughes.
I just, I just want to make a comment that I don't think any of us, I don't know for sure, I can speak for myself, I didn't run to have to get a paycheck, I didn't. I did it because I wanted to serve, and I don't understand, I understand we need to stop the bleeding in a department, I don't understand this at all.
We're providing it to you as an option, doesn't mean you have to vote for it, but we are presenting it as an option, especially the portion where it is something to be said when you look at every other community, and they are giving medical benefits to their council members, and the Town of Florence is lagging behind in not offering the same or equal benefits. As the state changes, as the communities throughout the state change, we do need to keep up with our practices and make sure that we're offering best practices in all areas.
I just want everybody to remember that we're here for, to be a servant, a public servant.
I do understand that.
Okay.
And like I said, it's, it's up to the wishes of the council what they'd like to do with this item.
Absolutely, I think that's exactly right. I mean, we're here to serve the community, but at this, I guess for me, it's also about looking at it holistically. If we're, this is how we sort of got into this position in the first place when it came to employee pay, was that we look at one section here, and one section here, and one section there, and all of a sudden, we're dropping other balls in other places. So although it's not necessarily needed, as far as being a public servant, it is important that we look at everything at one time, and that was my thought process with it, is that we're staying consistent. We're not saying that we're going to do council this year, and we're going to do staff that year, and we're going to do this department that year, and we're going to do, it's, just if we're doing a salary study, we're doing all of it together. So to me, that's where I think it's, it's good for us to just take a look at it, what council decides to do with it, of course, from there.
Councilmember Neil?
I remember speaking about this, and I was not for it at all. That's just my comment, I'm not for it, not interested. I did this because I love this town, I grew up here, I'm not on no money. So I'm not interested, don't want it, don't even think we should even be talking about it.
Any other questions or comments?
In the towns and cities that don't pay their council members, and I, I think there's only a couple, do they still offer benefits? We don't know.
I do not know that on the top of my head, I apologize.
Sorry.
All right, I believe discussion has ended unless I'm misreading, so if there's no further questions or comments, at that time, we'd need a motion. So there's no motion on the floor, so it's going to die on the floor. All right, moving on. Item 9D is ordinance number 719-22. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, amending Chapter 32 of the Florence Town Code by adding Section 32.200, establishing a teen council in the Town of Florence. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this item of a true teen council was brought back up by your mayor and your vice mayor. We've been talking about the need to have a teen council that is mentored by and works with the town council on important issues that's facing our community. This teen council will also do community projects as they move forward, and we're hopeful to take them to the League of Cities and Towns, and to compete on a national, regional, and state level when leadership programs come into play where they have these types of conversations. We've had the program in the past, it was run by the Parks and Rec Department. Your staff liaisons to this will now be the same staff liaisons as to the council. So myself and Mr. Graves, we will be your staff liaisons to this program, working directly with the council, and we would ask that at, at the time of adoption, that we do get two assigned liaisons, because we do need assistance to make sure that the council is mentoring our youth council. We're bringing this to you now, because we would like to be able to have this up and running by January, and with the two readings, and to be able to attract the kids, we plan on going into the high schools, speaking about what we're going to do, to really get out that attraction. This does not, the person does not have to reside in the city limits to be part of this committee, they will have to attend one of the high schools that are located within the town limits.
Thank you so much for that. I'm going to open it up at this time to our council, who may have questions regarding this agenda item. Council, do you have any questions? Vice Mayor, would you like to go first? Do you have anything, or no? No, it's okay. All right. I totally thought you motioned, so I'm so sorry.
No, no.
Okay, I saw something out of the corner of my eye, peripheral vision. Okay, all right. I appreciate you with this agenda item, and since there's no discussion at this time, other than please feel free to mark me down for service on this item, because it is near and dear to my heart, we need a motion.
This is first reading, Helen.
This is the first reading. Hey, I told you all I'm excited about this. Thank you. Our first call to the public at the end of the meeting, at this time, we'll open up for a call to the public, this is our second one this evening, and again, for the purposes of discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the public body and/or legal counsel, no, sorry, I was used to call to the public and it was highlighted, so opening call to the public. Is there anybody here who would like to speak at this time? Go ahead and raise your hand. Ms. Garcia.
How to start the clock. I just wanted to thank those citizens who've been actively participating in our Florence Works For You. As, as our staff did explain, is that this program has been up and running, and we've been working through the kinks while we have been getting all of our platforms out, making sure our apps are out and available. So those citizens who were working through the kinks of the process with us, I just want to acknowledge them and to thank them for the effort and the time that they have been putting in to make our town a more beautiful place. And I, for one, can see it every day when I drive down our streets, and I am grateful to the council who purchased the software, to our, for our staff who is continually keeping our, our public up to date, but most of all, I'm grateful to those citizens who are doing the work and putting in and making sure that our system works, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any written requests at this time, Ms. Garcia?
Future councilmember Buchalata.
Okay, future councilmember Buchalata will come forward.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. So I downloaded the app when it first came about, I want to say it was about August when I finally downloaded it, and I've been in there looking around, and it's a really good app when it's used correctly. There are quite a bit of outstanding issues on- There are quite a bit of outstanding issues on there. Earlier, when you guys were talking about it, I pulled up my phone, I pulled it up. The first one I clicked on was acknowledged in July of twenty-two, but is still outstanding. That's a long time for, and it was just weeds and overgrowth in a front yard. And it has the picture, it's pretty clear, but it's never been looked into any further. It was just commented on there that they would check it out, but nothing has been done. So I know there were timeframes about this when you guys spoke about it prior. What happens if those timeframes aren't met? Like who's held responsible? Because you only have one person pretty much running around doing a lot of it. And I know like a lot of them get diverted to other departments, Public Works for the Road, stuff like that. But there's a lot of things on there. Like if you get in and start clicking all of them and it says code compliance, a lot of them aren't being closed, and some of them are closed and not completed because I've been like driving around checking it out, looking at things. Just, I haven't made any complaints or taken any pictures. I'm just trying to see the app, how it works, stuff like that, educate myself. A lot of them are closed, and then when somebody questioned why they were closed, they would say that they inadvertently closed them by accident. It's just, you know, who, who's held accountable for all that?
Mr. Graves, can you touch base with her tomorrow during business hours? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do see three hands online raised. So at this time, we'll go ahead and unmute in the order that the hands were raised. I do see tech had noted that.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you. So I wanted to go back to the whole compensation and retention with the employees. There was a lot of information given, and I just wanted to have you guys confirm some of the things that you guys discussed. So that's amazing that the firefighters are, are staying, and you know, most of them have been there fifteen-plus years, I guess. How long has the current, you know, chiefs been in those departments? And then I, for the fire department, and then I wanted to go to the police department. Can you guys reiterate how many officers have left and, and in what timeframe? And how many chiefs have been in, in that department during that time? And, you know, it seems to me, you know, a lot of times people leave their employment because of the environment, perhaps, you know, bad leadership, things like that, animosity, you know, stuff like that. So, you know, just looking at the numbers and stuff, you know, has, has... Is it a concern of council to maybe see what's going on in the police department, specifically to see why our valued officers are leaving? I know from experience, I'd rather work in a place where I was highly valued, even if I was making less money, than getting away more money and not having a healthy work environment. Does that make sense? So, you know, that, I think, is something important to really look at, too, is what is happening in that particular department to have so many people leave. But if somebody can again reiterate the numbers of officers that left specifically for the police department and, and what the timeframe was for that, because that, that seemed pretty shocking.
All right, thank you so much. What I'll do is I'll have Ms. Garcia reach out to you tomorrow during business hours to respond to your questions. And our next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Once again, this is Sherry Har, born and raised here in Florence. I spoke to Chief Wallace on September seventeenth, and at that time, I think there was nine vacancies that was currently open. He indicated that six of them were being, actually, six were all filled, and they were working on the backgrounds, and the other three vacancies were possibly going to be filled this month. So I would love for Chief Wallace to maybe, you know, chime in and let us know what the status is. Also, from what I wrote down according to my notes, there was eighteen officers left in two years. With that being said, do we have a, an exit interview in place that's done by a third party? I think more people were ought to be more honest as to why they're leaving if you do something with a third party. Also, in regards to the CCL fix, I know that we had spoken in January, and again, I think in May or June, and they indicated, and I think Lisa Garcia was you, indicated that legal costs, it's going to cost, it costs the town money to take people to court, and there's a specific budget for this. Has that budget been increased? Because if not, we're going to be in the same place we're in now due to budget constraints. Lean and clean, has the town recovered the thirty thousand dollars for the cleanup of Coacapelleys? If not, why not? Town manager position is posted through November, where is this being advertised? Employee valuations, how are they going to be evaluated on the money that they receive? You know, is it going to be like based on performance? I'm sorry, I'm talking fast. Bonus contract, are they going to have a contract? If you get a five thousand dollar bonus for a police officer and you leave a month later, are they going to have something in place that they recoup that dollar amount, like in a prorated way? And I just want to say, Council, I really appreciate that you guys did not vote to give yourself raises. I commend each and every one of you. I know you guys do a hard job, and we look up to you for not giving yourselves a raise. I think something maybe can look into maybe next year, but I give you guys kudos for not voting on that. And I also appreciate you guys wanting to take, look at, look after your employees. And my last one is what's going on with the cemetery with the water and the foliage, and are they doing a study on that? Because I'm still waiting, seven years later, to get a spigot to my dad's grave. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will have our interim town manager, Ms. Garcia, reach out to you tomorrow and answer your questions. And our next speaker is Ms. Jo Gruess.
Good evening once again, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak at this point in time. Well, you know, Ms. Har pretty much said everything that I wanted to say, but I just want to add this. I just want to say that I am grateful and I'm thankful, Ms. Garcia, for your comment tonight because there is a handful of community people that are working very, very hard on trying to beautify Florence. Again, not bullying, but just beautifying the place because it's home to us and it matters. So thank you. And also for Mrs. Buchalata, you are correct, ma'am. I'm in and out of CCL fix very regularly. And I believe tonight it was mentioned there's twenty-nine. I don't, I don't know which one to do. They're open and they haven't been dealt with. All those twenty-nine are not processes that are waiting for court decisions or waiting to go to court. That number, I believe, is a misquote. There are several that are still open and not acknowledged. I am one that will go through and ask for feedback in and throughout the entire program. That is seldom given, and that's a bit of a disappointment. But I would just like to say overall, like I did say earlier, is I am grateful for this program. I'm grateful for the opportunity to use it. And I think as it continues and more people catch on and fully understand what the gist of this program is all about, I think that together, we will make a difference in our little hometown. So thank you again, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. All right, I do not see any other hands raised at this time. So I'm going to go ahead and close the final call to the council for this evening. Call to the public. Our next is call to the council. Councilmember Mendozza.
Well, all I got to say is thank you to staff. You guys did a wonderful job getting those numbers for us for these raises and I can't say anything bad about what you guys do. It's, it's amazing. We, we ask for certain things and you guys always deliver, so thank you for what you guys do.
Councilmember Hughes.
I'm excited for the next chapter in Florence's for our employees. I think we're off, I think it's going to be a great year next year. So I appreciate all the staff has done, too.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I think that was both beautifully said. I'm very proud of our staff, and I'm excited for this next stage of what Florence is going to become and all the things that lie ahead. That's it.
Councilmember Neal.
Just to say thank you to all the staff that stayed. And hopefully this helps you in major ways, to the entire Florence staff.
Councilmember Anderson.
Well, I applaud the staff constantly for all the stuff they do, but I would like to recognize Lisa and Trent for the improvement that they've made in our meeting here tonight with the modifications to the lighting, the video, the amplification of the system. Also, I'd like to thank Becky and Lisa for all the work that they've done on this compensation plan. You know, when you go through that, it is tremendous amount of work there. And it should not go unrecognized. Thank you, folks, for all that you've done for us. So my term on the council is closing in on me, and I just want to constantly thank you for all your help that you've given me over the last eight, eight years. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor.
My mic don't want me to talk. Just the same as everybody else, and I hope that our staff understands how, and all of our employees understand how valuable you are to our town. And it's unfortunate that it's taken time and that we haven't kept up with our pay rates, but I hope tonight we set the precedence and that from this point on, we won't be having this conversation about being far, this far behind. Hopefully, we will always stay competitive, and maybe one day we'll be able to be one of the leaders in the pay raise, and people will be talking about how the Town of Florence is poaching their staff from them, and, and everybody wants to come work for the Town of Florence. I think this is a great place to work. I think that it's a great place for people to come and be a part of a family environment. So as Ms. Courtney talked about, you know, being at a job, sometimes you'll stay somewhere where you make less money because of the environment. I can't think of a better place to be than here in Florence. And I think when we talk about firefighters that have been here for over fifteen years and our, you know, we want to know how long our current chiefs have been here. Well, one of them may be interim, but he has been here for a very long time. And although our police chief has only been here for a short time, the, the impact he and our current fire chief have made on this town is one that I have never seen before. I don't see people out touching everybody and saying, I want to know what you're doing. And engaging with the youth is the most important thing to me. And I see both of them constantly talking to kids and being involved. So for us, we may be behind on pay, but we are not behind on value. And now we're going to bring our pay up to where our values are. So I congratulate all of you.
I agree with everything that was said this evening, and I'm going to close out with an invitation for next Saturday to our Make a Difference Day, our annual event where we make a positive difference in the Town of Florence, October twenty-second. My birthday. My birthday. I'm so excited, and it's also our Firehouse Open House Day, and I believe that's taking place from one to four P.M. So, oh, two to four? Oh, at Station Two, thank you. From twelve to four P.M. at Station Two up by Anthem at Merrill Ranch. We hope to see everybody out and about for Make a Difference Day and Open House of the Fire Department. So with that, we do have an executive session this evening, and I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.